Joining us this evening.
No, she joins our earlier one in March, so Robin gave her the option of joining either, so.
Alright, and then I think are we just waiting on Mr. Tarot? I think we're just waiting on Ron, once we have Ron, we can get started.
There he is.
The man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Tarot.
How's everybody?
Doing well, doing well. Okay, are we ready to get started? Fabulous. Okay, I will um call to order. This meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at six thirty-three. Do notice having been posted. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made. Whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do a roll call um of members present and please indicate that you are participating remotely. Mr. Fenstermaker.
Here and participating remotely.
Ms. Ferrera.
Here and participating remotely.
Ms. Ramos Gagliardi.
Here and participating remotely.
Mr. Machado.
Here and participating remotely.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here and participating remotely.
Ms. Solomon.
Here and participating remotely.
And also with us this evening, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover. Our director of business and finance, Mr. Ronald Tarot. Our director of curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell. Our director of special education, Ms. Megan Ashton. And I don't think Mr. Leback is with us, is that correct?
That's that's correct. Uh Dr. Balsford is present.
Oh, thank you. And I should also, the chair is present and participating remotely. Okay, at this time, we'll call for the um pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The next regularly scheduled meeting. Of this body is Tuesday, March twenty-first at six thirty P M in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. And this will be the public hearing on the school budget. The first item on the agenda for this evening under this uh budget and financial. Is approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four preliminary budget as recommended by the Budget Subcommittee. Believe that members of the committee have um. In the folder for this evening, the documents. Ms. McTarot will walk us through for discussion.
Alright, um I'll share my screen. I don't know how much detail you'd like me to go through on this. I could just highlight the changes. That were made at the last uh last couple of budget subcommittee meetings. And then we could open up for questions if the school committee has any questions. What what's what's everybody's preference?
I know, I know that many, uh we had several members out at our last full meeting where we. The the initial presentation of the preliminary budget. In with them and just see um what's their comfort level and sort of. Starting with this overview and then do you want to backtrack into questions or do you want to start off in a more detailed?
Why not, why don't I just do a quick overview? And at the same time, I'll provide the highlights of changes that took place and then. We'll go from there, then if there's questions, we could stop, you stop me along the way.
I think that would be great. Thanks, Mr. Tarot.
So as of um. Last week, actually as of, as of yesterday. Think we've had quite a few meetings and it has been a lot of discussion around um. The student fees and where we would like to see them and and how they're going to end up, so. Uh the budget issue, gonna see it right now, some of the change, take that into consideration. The user fees for athletics uh was around a hundred thirty-eight thousand each year. That's brought down to fifty thousand, so there's an adjustment of less revenue. Of eighty-eight thousand and that eighty-eight thousand ships over to expenses covered by the school district. So you'll see a decrease in revenue for athletic fees, but an increase in expenses because you have to cover that. We did add an additional staff, um either an in-school suspension or hall mo- hallway monitor. Really depends on Dr. Balsford's uh preferences, far as what we want to, we want to do with that additional money. Whichever best serves the school and and which he's focused on. In addition, we added an additional tenth addition. We added uh a ten thousand dollars to the stabilization fund. It's in a specific line and within the capital expenditure section of the budget. So that's kind of a summary of what's happened since. This is just a, an overview where we're at right now. Uh the budget's a three point two nine percent increase. Or or a six hundred sixty-four thousand dollars over the FY twenty-three budget. We're projected to receive about three hundred eighty-five thousand and this is just based on the governor's preliminary budget. Not yet approved, so we do, you know, we we will monitor that and see what that ends up at. At the end, once the state budget is approved. Salary increases uh make up seven hundred seventy-six thousand of the total increase. And the reason why you have a total increase of only six hundred sixty-four, but salaries increased by seven hundred seventy-six. Uh we use some additional circuit breaker funds. Uh to offset some, some of the special ed out of district. So that's what actually helped bring the budget down a little bit. That won't be available in the upcoming years, I just want you to be aware of that. Budget also calls for five point zero F T Es. That does not take into consideration the um. Increase of twenty-four thousand for either I S S or. The the whole monitor, it really depends what the position is, could be point four, could be point five. Really depends what's high and what we use that plus funds for. Um out of district tuition is increased by only eighty-eight thousand. Again, it's offset by additional funds from the circuit breakers I mentioned. Special ed uh out of district transportation is down by seventy thousand and that's. Based on all the work that Mr. Rosario has done in the transportation provided by our own fleet. Uh homeless transportation decreased by twenty thousand. These are just some high level. Changes within the budget, obviously, there's plus and minuses throughout the specific budget document by line item. Any questions? I can always go back if you think of something as I'm going through this. So this is a summary of revenue. And I'm not sure if you're able to see it, okay? You should have a copy as well, but. If you can't see it that well and there's, there's, there's um. Public participating in this, they may not be able to see it, so just. See, well, let me see if I can, give me one second. Let's see if this works. Yeah, that works, okay. Is that legible? Yes. Thank, thank you. I, I thought I lost my hearing.
Sorry, we're all on you.
Um so this is just a summary of what I've anticipated revenue is going to be as, as mentioned. Um the governor's budget, it calls for another three hundred eighty-five thousand, that takes that to consideration. Um when the governor's budget was presented. This section here, this column section is that's called adjusted preliminary. Governor's budget uh two twenty-three, twenty-three. That's where we received information. Uh we'll receive, we're projected to receive an additional seventy-eight thousand in the regional transportation lines, we increase that. And then school, school choice, an additional eight thousand dollars. We had, I had three hundred forty-nine thousand budgeted. We're projected to receive three hundred fifty-seven thousand based on the students that are participating in the school choice program. And then just to the column to the right, two columns to the right is the eighty-eight thousand dollar adjustment. For the um student fees for athletics. Then as I go down, there's um, if I get back to here. Uh as you recall, uh the student parking fees. Have been waived, so we will no longer be charging the students for the parking fees. That's out of the budget. Um and then what I did is I put a new line in here called performing arts. And that's anticipated revenue based on the fee structure that we, that was approved by the school committee, I believe, two meetings ago or three meetings ago. So we're anticipated to receive about twelve thousand dollars of performing arts. And also, the way it's structured right now, we're treating performing arts, which is show choir and band. As the same as athletics, athletics used to have a total gross operating budget offset by student fees. And performing arts basically just had a small portion of the operating budget and all of it flowed through the revolving account. Now we both treat them the same. The total gross cost to run those programs are in the operating budget. Offset by these revenue sources. So now we're comparing apples for apples, we want to look at what the cost of running the programs are.
Um Ron, can I ask a question on the, on that? Those items, on the user fees, athletics and clubs. That doesn't include, that line right there, does not include user fees for um. Music programs? They're on the bottom line, which is performing arts, correct?
That's correct.
So, uh does the athletic revolving fund also include gate fees revenues? Some, from games?
Yeah, so the gate fee revenue is still going to go through the revolving account.
Okay.
Unless, unless the school committee prefers that they want to put it through. The operating, I, I think keeping it separate is, I think it's easier and cleaner because the depositants of those funding, we can, we can. Laser into what we receive in gate receipts.
And, and so that leads me to my next question. Do we charge, are there tickets sold for performances? That could be likened to um the gate fees that you get? And, and if so, where do they, where would they fall in here?
I would treat those the same way in going into the performing arts revolving account. Um I know that they passed couple, I don't know about the past couple of years, prior to COVID. Uh I think the gate, the ticket sales for like um holiday festival. They may have generated close to ten thousand dollars somewhere in that area. So again, those two will be treated the same, which is nice, everything is on the same playing field and treated the same.
So will, in the future, there be a line that says um performing arts revolving fund and so we'll see what the gate?
Yeah, I, I could, I could, I could add that to this.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep, good question. I'm gonna go to the next slide, which is um. Which is the operating expenditure side. And a- as I had discussed, there were a lot of changes that transpired through the budget process, as you can see these, these. Adjustment columns, including the budget adjustment. And recently, the budget subcommittee recommendation as far as the athletic fees and the adjustments we made. So um a lot of back and forth looking at positions. Recommendations from the school, the superintendent as far as positions, what we're going to keep based on. Uh the special ed program study that's being completed. So a lot of the things we cut out of the budget, there's no sense putting it in there if we're not sure if it's the right direction. Without, without a final report from the um new solutions uh company.
Ron, I'll just say that this looking, matching this up with the minutes from the budget subcommittee. Was really helpful to try to get up to speed because I felt like I missed a couple of meetings, so having this kind of. Adjustment by date was, was very helpful, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, it, it actually helps me track it with, with both school committees. Tracking what happens sometimes. Jeff had to steer me straight a couple of times, no, no matter the meetings, go, go, go this way. So, it, it helps because it creates a chronological process of what happened too. Any, any questions? Uh let me just scroll down here. So again, the, the programs where we were. Where's revolving fund is similar. You'll look at this, it's, these are balanced budgets, so we know what our revenue and expenditures is going to balance each other. You can't obviously have a budget that's not in balance. So this shows you where they come from, special revenue sources versus the operating budget and where the expenses are.
I had, I had a couple of questions on this page. Just to verify, the salary line up above, that includes the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand in new positions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and um on the line with professional development. At uh ten point seven one percent increase, I, I'm assuming that has to do with a, a, a good amount of. Professional development that's happening with respect to. Um project lead the way and other things that are going on within the school. I, I kind of missed that in the discussions, I just wanted. Chit chat to see if, if there were any other extraordinary.
Those are, similar to what we do with the technology budget, uh and the special ed budget, Mrs. Haskell. Actually drives that particular budget line. And, and those are the P D programs that she, she works with Dr. Balsford in, in the. This, the instructional leads to figure out what they need for P D. It also includes some of the contractual obligations we have for teacher. Uh reimbursement for course, course reimbursement. So that particular line item is specific to that. Mrs. Haskell may be able to laser in a little bit more detail. Um i- if need be.
That's good to understand. And then the other question, is there, if I ask another question, Madam Chair? Um, on the competitions line. Is that an increase in the competitions that are projected to take place? Or is it also, in addition, the fact that those weren't laid out specifically in the. In the budget in the past?
Yeah, so part of that increase is really related to bringing all of the course associated with performing arts. Some of those, those are course associated with competitions. Um some other courses are associated with the educational supply of the performing arts. So the educational supply line may be up as well uh related to that.
Okay, alright, that's very soon. And then last question is, related to the capital um. Assessment, um the, and I know we'll talk about it more, is the. The ten thousand dollars added to the stabilization fund, and if you want to go over that later, I was just wondering where that stood at. Um when we get to that page if you want.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's alright, I think that's. Mrs. Andrews can, can add to that if she wants to, as a result of conversations that took place at the budget subcommittee.
Sure, I'll just, um so at our budget subcommittee meeting, one of the things that came up, sort of as we were discussing the. Approach to user fees in general and, and to athletics and performing arts was um knowing that we're also um. Facing some significant capital needs in the near future in terms of the, the football field, the track. Um I think that uh needs for the pack are maybe a little bit further down the line, but we know that there are also, you know, some um. Uh things in there that'll approach their useful life, uh soundboards and lights and. Making sure we have fully operating microphones, things that go beyond sort of the normal uh maintenance. So we um, we're trying to make a very small dent. Um by sort of like the same approach we've taken to O P A by increasing. A contribution in this budget to stabilization so that we can try to build up. Um some reserves uh in anticipation of those sort of extraordinary. Uh needs for both performing arts and uh for athletics. So that was the rationale. We started with a very modest amount. Um and you know, the committee certainly, you know, we should discuss that, but that's, that was the rationale behind that.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. We, I think we did it. In our very first years and then it was one of the things that came off the budget, so I, I think that's very smart of the budget subcommittee proposed.
It, it's actually very similar approach to what's being done for the O P A fund. It's, I believe there's a thirty thousand dollar line item now for the contribution, annual contribution to the O P A fund. And so it's in line with building up those reserves. And in anticipation or in preparation, we know it's going to happen, so it's in preparation when we have to do some capital repairs.
Uh Ron, where does the, I, I did check on what the contribution. Was going to be this year for O P A and Mr. Fenstermaker got back to me. But I'm just wondering, where does it show in these operating line budget, uh o- operating budget lines?
So they would be for, for the contribution to O P A, it would be under the employee benefit insurance line?
Okay.
And I don't know if you can see where my cursor is, it's in this particular line there.
That's what I suspected. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go to the next slide. And these are the, the positions that are currently in the budget as, as presented and discussed. As I mentioned, within my presentation, I have five percent, I mean, five F T Es and it really should be five point four. I'll correct that for the public hearing. Any questions on any of these? This is just a reconciliation of our, our F T Es. Knowing where our positions are, where the increases are, so we can track changes as, as, as it happens. And also for reporting purposes, we use this data for other points, so. For me, I've always used this historically in my prior positions, knowing that my F Ts are, it, it helps, it helps you stay on track and within budget.
And so Mr. Tarot, for that one too, I think we would have, that one indicate the point four, we just have to probably maybe. Update that as well.
Correct. Uh it, I, I think it's a certified position, so it'd be up here in the certified staff sex, staff section.
Oh yeah, I see, it's right there, in school suspension, so that is also.
But it's zero, yeah, I just got to make it to point six, but thank you. Um this is the regular transportation uh budget. It's a two point four percent increase. FY twenty-four will be the last year of the contract with Fisher Bus. It's the fifth year of, of a, if a. Five-year contract, they're one-year renewals. So this, you know, obviously at some point, there will have to be a joint school committee meeting. From both the Somerset, Somerset Berkeley, the K eight and Somerset Berkeley. To approve this contract and any other contracts which you typically do on an annual basis. This is, whoops, sorry about this. This is the uh homeless transportation. Budget line, current year was at seventy-five thousand six hundred, we reduced this line by, by twenty thousand dollars based on. Based on just utilization and current bills. So we've been trending pretty favorable right now, obviously that could change, you know, there's. This housing complex and, and things that are potentially happening within town. Uh once that happens, then we'll have a better idea whether this has to be readjusted. And also I know there's a demand for figuring out how we can make sure we. We capitalize on getting some of the state reimbursement available through the program. Just so you'll know, when I do my end of year reports, this is, this is data points that I report to the state, what makes a determination what we receive for reimbursement.
Ron, I, I might just be missing, when, on this sheet, see how the first column says total? Is that supposed to be total or am I missing something?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, it was the total for. So the homeless transportation total is like thirty thousand dollars, it's fifty thousand, plus the twenty. And then there's a forced to home program that was about running about twenty-five thousand.
But the title of the very first column is that?
Oh, total. I'm sorry, no, that's wrong.
Okay.
That total, okay. I was looking at this total, I was looking where the total column was.
So that is the, the previous rate? FY twenty-two?
And actually, this is the estimated rate.
Okay, alright.
From FY twenty, FY twenty-three, and it should estimate at twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up, I'm sorry. This should be a dollar sign. Which has happened, oh, sorry about that. This should not be a dollar sign, it's a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, alright.
It's a hundred and eighty days, it's a hundred and eighty dollars a day for the route, and the other was a hundred and forty.
So that, it, so then it is total days.
This should be days, not total.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This is going to be a little more difficult, I think I'll, I'll try to make it as big as I, I can. So this budget for the contracted services for out of district special education. It is projected to be about five hundred thirty-one thousand. Uh current approved budget is six hundred and one, this particular budget line is down by about seventy thousand dollars. There's a, there's a couple of reasons why, that's maybe because there's students that we had to transfer, transport last year. We won't have to this year and/or students coming back to district. Or lastly, uh we're providing the transportation with our own fleet. And then, as I look over here, the total operating budget for both. The driver's cost is up by about sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars. And then the cost of operations up about two thousand dollars. That takes into consideration what we anticipate the cost to be for. Um just inspections, tires, battery maintenance, oil change, et cetera, like you would do with your, your own vehicles.
Our, our fleet has grown quite a bit, um and, and that's actually benefited the district, but.
It has.
You and the team are doing that.
It had, I mean, and I think. Wayne's done a good job with, with maintaining and keeping drivers, so we've been very fortunate to have drivers that are consistent. But obviously, there's times when, when we have our drivers that are off second, it could be a strain on. On the operation, very similar to it can be on, on a contracted services company. Somebody's out with COVID, it's got a domino effect. But for the most part, you spend twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. For, for vehicles, I'm sorry, not say twenty-three, you can spend forty thousand dollars for a vehicle. In, in one year, the vehicle would pay for itself. So we are scheduled to replace. Is a Chrysler with, this Chrysler right here, Van nine. That's ready to be replaced. We got, we received word that the vehicle we placed in order on potentially could be coming our way. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be using this vehicle as a trade and to get, get this out of the fleet. So we, we also have a program knowing when we think we want to, our replacement cycle dates. Are here, so we try to stagger them, so we're not replacing too many vehicles in one year as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Next page, that's, okay, one more. This is a, and if, I'll try to make this a little bit big, I'll try to slide this so without losing too much data. Um this is special education cost. Um and this is related to all types of special education costs in district. Uh contracted service for transportation, medical therapeutic and out of district tuition. And, excuse me. You'll see on the out of district tuition, which is on the left-hand side, it's called O O D. A portion of it is covered by operating, a portion is covered by circuit break and a portion covered by I D A funds, which is a federal subsidized funding program. Um and it tells you, and, and on the bottom, it's graphically tells you where we're at with the programs and where we're spending our money. Relatively flat in terms of costs, we, you know. If, if we recall, we had twenty to twenty-one, I think was the year that we had a pretty. Pretty large increase with students coming from the K eight over to the region and we made some adjustments. I think at that twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, I think was a regional, the adjustment to the regional um agreement as well. Any questions on this?
Well, to me, this shows that while our costs have been relatively flat. The mix of funding sources has actually been favorable in that less money is. The mix of funding sources has actually been favorable in that less money is coming directly out of the budget and more are being. Supported by circuit breaker and idea funds. Well, idea funds have been pretty flat, but the other.
IDA funds have been pretty flat. I'm glad you you pointed that out. I, uh, the circuit breaker funds really. Uh a a direct impact on the type of course we incur within the district and the type of funding available. Is you have high educational costs, these reimbursements that come back to the district, and that's why we're able to. Actually do the seven hundred thousand FY twenty-three. And if you recall FY twenty-three, actually, we probably receive, will receive approximately a million dollars this year as well. So we have some excess money that will be able to cover some of the costs in the current year, which will allow us to do some prepayments. Uh two-month prepayments for next fiscal year, so we'll be working on that, so we'll be doing that as well. And then this is, I'll just make this a little bit smaller, but this is just a snapshot of. You know, we're the program, where we're spending the money as far as the out-of-district. Uh programs, private school versus collaboratives. If you can see, the majority of it is with collaboratives. Um that's we take advantage of that. Obviously, the residential is the most costly programs. And um. And then obviously, there's discern programs. The two bottom ones that I asked, Damascus and BSCU. Uh extension programs for students that are aging out, that are able to go to. Uh almost experiencing college programs, and I think um. Ms. Ashton can probably explain that to you a little bit better than I can.
We have, uh, we have students attending, um, Macy's program is a program that allows students access to some, um. College courses, BCC, we have student at Bridgewater, we support educational coaches to support the students as they access these um programs.
Thanks, Meg. Any questions in this? This is, I'll just scroll this up. I may not be able to make this larger without losing it. This is our our uh building and grounds and maintenance budget. There is a um. A slight decrease when you look at the athletics program because of the. We we took out the turf management piece over the past couple of years. We were trying to keep that in there as far as. Contracted services for certain grounds and repairs. We we moved away from that. There is a. Pretty large increase in the snow removal. By thirty-three thousand, that's based on this second from the top line. Um that's regarding the the bids we just went out for this year. And the costs associated with uh sanding the parking lots at the parking lot of the high school. We were lucky to get somebody to bid, as you remember. We we were worried about having that even happening, so. Um it's it's an insurance policy to make sure we had, we keep our buildings open. That's the way I look at it. And then the rest of these are basically, as some of them are contractual repairs and maintenance, we do some. We try to do a lot of regular. Preventive maintenance and repairs, HVAC systems, Dylan Walsh, who does the HVAC system and our maintenance crew. Uh Mike Carrera and Jeff Jeff Alves. Uh keeping the building operational addition to our head custodian and. And our other custodians within the building. And whether it's clock systems or um any repairs that we have to do, the fire systems, we have to do all those repairs and maintenance, and that's what this budget covers. I'll go to the next slide. This is a summary of the technology budget. This is a high level, and it obviously behind this, there is next couple of pages, it's it's quite a bit of detail behind this. But this shows you where we're spending money um within the technology area and keeping our systems robust. In in keeping up to date with the technology that we need to drive, you know. Provide instructional support through technology. Uh we do, we're on a great replacement cycle as far as the Chromebooks, Chromebooks we've ordered for FY twenty-four in. That uh we received the labels yesterday or today, so Steve will be labeling all them and prepping them, so. We're ahead of the curve instead of chasing after stuff, so we're really happy about that. We made some changes. I think last year, we talked about. Updating and replacing the access points, which are the wireless connections. Those have been done. We're looking at. Replacing this year um. Battery backup units that are close to seven or eight years old that have to be replaced, so Steve's working on that. So we're just continually looking at this. We know, we have conversations all the time, but what do we? What's the next thing we need to do? We look at security, we look at phone systems and stuff like that. Steve's. Kind of tracking all of that, building his master plan on what needs to be replaced when. Uh one of the biggest purchases we're gonna be doing pretty soon is, they call them. Jeff may have to help me out with this. Not routers, but uh racks that have the network connections to them.
Servers?
Not servers, um. They're they're racks where we plug in, we plug in the the CAT seven cable that does the does the routing. I I can't believe I can't remember right now, but.
You know, the network, the network switches?
Switches, thank you. The 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 switches, so that's what we're looking at, replacing. Uh the majority of them are on the on the first floor with the. Several of them on the second and third, but the majority on the first floor, so Steve's just trying to figure out, how do we? How do we plan for that and get that completed? We'll probably. Those are one of the expenses that are eligible for reimbursement on the E-rate, so I think he's gonna try to use some of the E-rate money to do that.
Just a quick question now that you mentioned that, Ron. When there are expenses that are reimbursable. By E-rate, do they still appear in this budget or is it separate? Because it's it's got a separate funding source.
Um, that's a good question. We've been trying to leverage the E-rate. That the company actually bills E-rate. So if I have to do a print, so let's see, the company, the company covers forty percent of the cost, and it's a hundred thousand dollar project. What we've been doing is putting the invoice in front, the requisition for a hundred thousand. In another line called E-rate, E-rate funding as a credit. So I I can track when the credits are being used.
Okay.
So this is, anything that would be here would be a net to E-rate credits.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm gonna make this a little bit small, but I. There's a lot of work that went through with with the 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 technology piece, but Mrs. Haskell also did a lot of work. And and with the high school staff. And the instructional, the content coordinators and and the building principals, Dr. Brelford. As far as what technology is needed from from an instructional standpoint, and I'm talking about software. And we we incorporated everything within this, so I was just, let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger and then you can. So the instructional software piece, we're trying to capture everything we use from an instructional standpoint, and that's on the instructional software. You can see that within your own, within your own handout. This is an integral component of delivering instructional services. And it's become, I think, the core of what we do. Liz is welcome to add anything to this conversation. But she's been instrumental in getting the instructional software technology piece incorporated in this budget. As you can see, it takes more than just one person to put this budget together. It it's a team, so it's. Sharing information and collecting the data and having conversations is critical to getting a a good budget, good comprehensive budget. And I, uh, okay, here's the capital. This is the allocation of debt service payments we have. This debt service is a principal and interest we have on. On the bonds to build the the middle, uh, the high school. And this is a a payment of principal and interest. Um for those that may be new to the district, and I don't remember if we talked about this and you were here last year. When they issued the bonds, it was premiums. The premiums on the bonds are extra money the district or the 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 district received. Those premiums were put into an escrow account or holding account, and we use those premiums. To offset the interest payments on an annual basis, so they're allocated annually to this, so we use about thirty. A little over thirty thousand dollars. That offset the interest payments on this. So uh they're allocated on the annual basis, based on what we receive for the premium. Typically, bond premiums are paid to get a higher yield on the on the bonds because of tax write-offs. The center section touches the call provisions, when we could potentially look at refinancing. We were kind of monitoring the twenty-three year and the twenty-four year as far as call provisions. But as you notice, the rates are so low and. The bond rates right now exceed this, so we really, right now, do not have an opportunity. Under the call provisions to do a refi, to bring the interest rates low and save a little bit of interest, interest payments. That that's where we're at right now, but we're monitoring this. The last section is just the allocation of the principal and interest payment and stabilization. As a percentage that we use when we calculate the member community share of the capital payments.
And that's based straight on uh population enrollment?
That's correct. This this percentage here, you'll see on the assessment sheet, that that number's coming right from there.
Do we have an idea of what is in the balance of the capital sta- stabilization fund?
Four hundred and forty thousand?
Okay.
Maybe? I I can check, I think.
Four forty-two, I believe, Ron, from our notes.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay.
One four?
No, four four two, four hundred and forty-two thousand.
Okay.
That was a trick question. That's a good question. That's it, that's um, that's, that's what I have tonight. This would be similar to what I would be. I'd add a little bit more of some of the data points we have from Desi's. Foundation amount, uh, those are right from their sheets. And I'll also include the calculation for um chapter seventy, funding, how the state calculates that.
I know we asked some questions as we went along, but I'll open it up to the committee for further questions.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Machado.
Um, thank you. Uh first of all, uh. My thanks to the subcommittee that worked with the administration. Uh obviously, like uh Ron mentioned, it is a team effort, so uh it's nice that uh. They were able to present these things to you and you were able to guide them uh on behalf of us, so that's a great thing. Um, one thing I have to agree with about the ten thousand dollars being added to the stabilization, I think um. It's it's a necessity, but I also think uh for future um. Budgets, we may, you know, I think Jen, you mentioned it's a small little uh. Spec, well, it's actually um for a new field, it probably will be like, you know how I love bringing uh decimal points into it. Point zero zero five percent of a football field. Um so we really need to uh really, you know, fill it, you know, take um. Every effort that whatever money we have left over in our budgets uh to really. Squirrel it away because we're gonna have some expenses, not only for fields, but maybe even the pack or other building, you know. Items in a capital uh improvements and all of that stuff, so um we really need to be a little bit more active with that. Uh this next message, this next comment or question is really directed towards. Our uh principal and also um our superintendent. Obviously, we removed eighty-eight thousand dollars from our user fees. Obviously, everyone knows how I feel about user fees, so I. Again, thank you for bringing that to us. But I also think it equally is important, removing those user fees is making sure that the programs. Are still uh worth having for our students, so. Uh I just wanna make sure that, you know, um, Mr. Francis and also Mr. Young. Uh really looked at these budgets, really thought about uh competitions. Uh playoffs, all of that other great stuff that our kids get to do. But I also, with that being said, I also want our. Coaches, our um band leaders. Uh chorus leaders, performance leaders and all of that, to understand that. The budget's been in place based on their feedback. And at times, we get, you know, uh opportunities to uh join other competitions or other events. Uh in town or around the state that. They have to live in within our budget. It's just not come in or use the budget against. The school committee or the school by saying, oh, there's no money in the budget. The money is in the budget based on what we know and what they presented to us, so I just wanna make sure. Before we move forward with the eighty-eight thousand dollars removed, that both Mr. Young. And Mr. Francis has looked at these and they have put their stamp of approval on them.
Mrs. Schoonover, do you wanna respond to that?
Mr. Machado, I can assure you that that, almost your exact conversation was had with both Mr. Francis and Mr. Young, and they. Have both had input, and I know both have asked for input from their coaches and advisors. So I can assure you that that occurred.
Alright, perfect, because obviously, uh and I know you being at at the head of the building, I'm sure you're not, you know, being very uh. Student focused, I I was pretty assured that you had, but I just would like to, you know. It's in public now and every parent, every child that is concerned about programs, now that user fees are being removed, that. It's gonna hurt their programs. That is not the case. Um, the other piece.
If I could just comment on that too, Mr. Machado, if that's okay?
Sure.
I mean, I'm just gonna really echo what Dr. Brelford just said. When we met with Mr. Francis. And Mr. Young in the budgeting process, um, uh we we created this budget and it sort of addresses. One of the questions that Mrs. Gagley already had early on about the competition line. Uh, everything that they requested for uh transportation, for for games, uh equipment, uh competition. I mean, everything, that's what this budget entails. None of that was reduced in any way, and we did see that shift this year because we didn't want. Uh some some user fees that were collected to uh to. To cover some of the costs of of some of these competitions. We wanted everything to be right there, so that everyone can see exactly what it is, so. Um they presented the information, and that is exactly what you have in front of you.
Okay, and and I'm sorry that my my questions that I'm asking is based on more of the changes since our last meeting. You know, because our last meeting, all those answers have been called, so I'm just asking questions more about the new information. That obviously, you all worked until about eight o'clock last night to present to us. And and then the last thing that I um. You know, the, we we have two documents. One says a family cap is three hundred, and the other, the other document says it's four fifty cap. Um, I'm assuming that the. The new form that we receive is the correct one, a four hundred and fifty dollar cap for family members, for a family. You're on mute, Ron.
Yep, I'm gonna share a sheet. So. And everybody can see this correct? Uh, let's see if it's making a lot, or is that not going? Okay. Alright, so this is, this top section is how it was. And then the bottom section is how it's proposed to be.
Yeah, and 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 the only thing that, and I, again, I I commend. The committee bringing it. To a normal, you know, a reasonable amount. Obviously, zero is the best number, but you know, we also have to take baby steps, and we also know. That we have some major expenses, not only in the athletic fields, but also in the pack someday, so we really have to, you know. Really look at it a situation where we wanna make sure that the decision that we're making today. Is not going to come back and say, well, guess what, we're going back to four hundred dollars a student or something like that, so. Is not going to come back and say, well, guess what, we're going back to four hundred dollars a student or something like that, so. Uh I like the approach of doing it, you know, slowly. Um, I also believe next year, not this year, next year, we also may even have to look at some of the clubs. Um fees and things like that, but that is down the road, uh first, let's work with this. The only thing I'm gonna ask of the committee, um when I look at this sh- sheet, I see. If my child is in show choir and plays on the marching band, um. She or he will pay a hundred and fifty dollars if I'm reading this correct. If my child plays uh football, track, basketball. Um, my child's gonna play, pay a hundred and fifty dollars. But if my child plays marching band and basketball. Um, my child's gonna pay three hundred dollars. And I understand you're, you have the two line items or the two revolving accounts. And I know one says athletics and one says performing arts. I would like to see us eliminate that because to me. This is puts music, and I've and I know I'm just echoing this again, what I've said over and over again. This puts two groups um separately. Unless I'm reading this incorrectly, I would prefer us calling it an activities account, revolving account. Because all activities, regardless if it's a sport, music, I think we all agree, or even a club. You know, even competition clubs like, what great, you know, on social media, I saw that the Decker students did well, you know, it. Those are all things that we are very proud of our students and we're proud that this town is able to give it to them. So I would like to see them merged regardless of where the funds are coming from uh when it's needed. But what I just heard from our administration is that our budgets are being based on the needs of. Each of the sports programs, music programs, clubs and so on, so really keeping it separate. I think it kind of is not necessary anymore if we are able just to put a a revolving account for sports. And also, I think it would prevent uh more paperwork for our administration to have to charge this child once. Because they're only playing one sport, but if they do play a a music, they're gonna have to. Go into my bucks again, so those are my only inputs, all my other inputs regarding the budget, classrooms. And um and out of now, I wanna go back to the more important thing, are are actually, well. Everything's important, but um the work that we've done on the busing, the special ed, everything is outstanding, but I think. Adding another vice principal and another guidance counselor is going to make a huge difference. In our in our students, um so I'm very proud of this budget. Um, uh and I, so again, thank you to the administration and also the subcommittee who's met over and over and over. Uh because I've kind of read your minutes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mister Machado. The only thing I wanted to add, this was, we did uh discuss this at our last committee of the whole, but um I wanted just to really reiterate. That this athletic budget does include the addition of both boys and girls lacrosse. Um, so there is an additional program, so managed if in this presentation to reduce fees. But to actually add um a a sport uh for boys and girls. So and I know we discussed that before, but I just wanted to make sure everyone recalled that that is included in this budget. Any other members of the committee have questions or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Mister Fenstermaker?
Yes, just to Mister Michelle's point, I think on these user fees, is 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 I think I've mentioned and I think we've got some general agreement. We couldn't get the whole thing in one shot because we we were literally, as you say, working on this last night. Uh but the idea was to do something, we can monitor this. And then the next budget year, we can do something, you know, expand to either either club, additional clubs or. You know, look at these programs a little bit differently, but I are are, we were committed to. Finding a way to get the user fees down, we wanna continue to do that, and I just wanted to to throw that out there. For your um, you know, to your comments. And the other thing that I'll say in a on a lot of the, uh some of the programs that we, not some of the programs, some of this, the positions that we have. Uh to service students that might otherwise have to be going to outside uh educational um. Um facilities, so it's important we keep everyone we can in the district, so that's all. I mean, we had a a great group on the budget subcommittee and and uh ready to move forward, thanks.
Thank you, Mister Fenstermaker, other members of the committee? Um, well, so I'll just I'll just add, um so. As chair of the budget subcommittee, I wanna I wanna thank my colleagues for all the hard work that they did alongside. Um, all of our administration, and I know that um administration also takes into account a lot of the feedback of. Um their teachers, so I wanna thank the entire group for putting together um. What I think is a a budget that meets the, if we can be honest, sort of the increasingly complex. Um and sort of pressing needs of our students, uh given the world we live in right now. Um and that is not unique to Somerset Berkeley, um but I think our first obligation, we're talking about a lot of numbers, but I think. We all know that we're here to make sure that first and foremost, our budgets support the needs of our students. Um so, you know, there may be some folks that feel like five point four positions is is, you know, a hefty increase. We're fortunate that in the governor's proposed budget, um there increases in chapter seventy. And regional transportation is gonna help us achieve some of those things, um but I do think that. Um those positions are um crucial to providing the social emotional support. Um there's wraparound services, some of the preventative work that needs, you know, that we need to do. Prevention is always better than intervention whenever we can, and um I feel um confident that those. Positions are well, well reasoned and um and I I feel confident that they're they're needed in order to serve our students. Um, I think that there's more work to do on, there's been so much accomplished with special ed and we know that. There's more work to do on that based on the results of the reports and we'll, you know, we'll take those um. Those up as um administration has a chance to work their way through those recommendations. Um, so I just wanna thank the members of the committee, I wanna thank this superintendent, and I wanna thank um Mister Taro. I don't know how he keeps all these spreadsheets for two districts straight, and we ask a lot of questions and. Um I wanna thank him very much for his, for his um hard work and his good work in putting together what I think is a. Budget that meets our kids' needs, but is also um, you know, aware that um we need to also be. Efficient and uh cognizant of the stress and strain that we know our taxpayers are under and these sort of economic times and so. I hope that this budget strikes a good balance, um and I'm grateful to everyone for their work on it.
Chair, can I ask one more question? Um, are for our next meeting where we do the budget hearing uh for the towns. Are we going to include the assessment sheet, because I know um normally we. Compile the sheet just to show what the percentages or what the the obligations for each town will be, is that something that we'll be presenting at the next meeting?
Um, we will definitely be presenting it at the next meeting, I do believe that um Mister Taro, uh we do have that. Not enough, well, I know Mister Taro has.
I have, I have it here on the folder, I I'm looking at, I just didn't know if we were going to discuss anything on this sheet or. I I have nothing to discuss about it, but I was just wanted to make sure if this is something that we're gonna share, obviously, the average folk. A person in towns, uh when they look at this, you know, unless you've been dealing with this as much as Julie has in the past. And uh others on the committee, um where, you know, it's really gibberish, it's almost like voodoo mail. A voodoo figures or something like that, as uh the the late uh President Bush would say, but uh. Eh yeah, I'm looking at it, it looks very accurate, but I didn't know if that's something that you wanna talk about today, or should we just talk about it? I have no issues with this, so I'm fine the way it's presented, and so.
Particularly for the folks who who were not at the last meeting, uh we we can certainly, I think we can have a more in-depth conversation at the meeting on the twenty. At the public hearing on the twenty-first, if the wishes of the committee is, we can certainly um do a a a brief overview of that assessment sheet at this point. Mister Taro, if you wanna share that?
Sure. Okay, I think you should see that, right?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll I'll start off with just the top portion, I I think the question we had when we were looking at the capital, capital payments for the principal and interest. These percentages are the same on that sheet, in those carryovers to that sheet, so that's how we determine the allocation of the debt service payments. So I just wanted to point that out because it's the beginning, um obviously, it is a pretty. Complicated formula, but there's a lot of work that went went into this when when the. Uh renewal of the regional agreement was uh done two years ago, I think it was two years ago, it feels like it was sooner, but it was two years ago. Uh we start off with the total operating budget of twenty million eight forty-two. We back out the transportation piece to capital assessment and the added district tuition. I'll go in more detail on the added district tuition on the bottom, uh but then we we come in what's called a uh a base operating budget. And then we allocate based on the amount that Destiny, Department of Education indicates. What it should be, what's called the minimum local contribution for each of the member communities, I don't make this number up because right from. The Department of Ed, then we go through this calculation figuring out what the total base operating budget is. Um above the minimum local contribution, that would be the next section here in the section three. And so on and so forth, we kind of go through these calculations, once we get to the. Allegation, excuse me, then we apply the chapter seventy funding, chapter seventy funding goes back to the top percentage here. Seventy-four point one one eight percent and twenty-five point eight five two percent for the member communities. And that's how they get their allocation of chapter seventy money uh in step five. Um, there are other items of reimbursement that are here in this section. And that is, is the charter school reimbursement, interest income, and then the Medicaid and E-rate. The E-rate's a small portion of this, it's a smaller portion, not the dot, the the big dollars that we typically would use. For purchasing capital items that are forty percent reimbursement. Those are allocated again using the percentages up above based on student enrollment by member community. And then we come up with a total operating assessment. Excuse me, then we allocate the transportation cost back to the member community. And then we also allocate to special ed out of district piece. So I'll spend a little bit of time, if I'm, I haven't already confused everybody. On the allocation of the out of district tuition, under the agreement. The member communities are responsible for those students placed out of district by that member community. So in essence, we look at what the out of district tuition's gonna be. And we allocate those costs down here on the bottom, which would be line fifty-five. Right here, uh um, right there. And then we allocate what our circuit breaker and our IDEA funds are gonna be, which is a million two, it's a million plus two hundred thousand from IDA. And we use a percentage of current years projected out of district tuition. For the member communities, and that's how we get ninety-two percent and seven point three five percent. And that's the percentage of IDA and circuit breaker money allocated back to the the member communities. And then that number comes back up here in this green section on line thirty-eight. And then we calculate the rest of the course by member communities. After that's done, we then we apply the the capital assessment, and then we have a total assessment. The total assessment is thirteen million seven, seven hundred eighteen thousand total assessment. And then allocated ten million to Somerset and three point, almost three point six million to Berkeley. And you see the increase of a hundred and forty-one thousand and two seventeen respectively, as far as increases over F Y twenty-three. The percentage for some, for Berkeley. Appears a little bit higher because the driving factor with Berkeley is um the out of district tuition. Uh their out of district tuition cost next year, based on the their member. Communities enrollment for out of district is increased by about a hundred and fifty thousand. So that in itself raises this assessment of of three point six million dollars higher than. It normally would have increased, it's just, it's just luck of the draw, two years ago, uh there was a number of students that came in from. The Somerset side that came into the high school, and it was a a large increase for the town of Somerset at that point. And that's how the assessment sheet is calculated.
Mister Taro, if I could uh add to that, um I just, so that folks um. Understand completely, um it looks like a big increase for Berkeley, but I wanna, I wanna um circle back to. Uh had we not amended the original regional agreement, um which spearheaded by Miss Gagliardi. Um Berkeley would be, uh Berkeley's share of the out of district tuition would have been a portion on a per pupil basis. Please correct me if I say something wrong, and more like paying twenty-five percent of the entire amount of the out of district tuition. Um, so although this may at first blush look like a big increase for Berkeley, I wanna point out that had we not secured that um. Change to our regional agreement, um the a proportion of out of district tuition that Berkeley would have had to bear. Um would be much, much higher, um and also the other thing that I would add is to keep in mind the whole picture. Um generally speaking, what we're talking about is a a a current um cost that's on the Berkeley K to eight, this is true for Somerset as well. It's a, it's a cost born born on the K to eight budget, and then when a student. Grad graduates from middle school and comes to the high school, um that cost comes onto the regional budget. But those costs are are, they are borne by each town already, so it's it it an increase to the regional. Um budget for not a district cost is offset in most cases unless it's. Uh like a new placement for a current, it's offset by the a a commensurate decrease. On the respective K to eight budget, so um for the towns, although it looks like a big increase. It is, you you sort of just remind folks to keep that, keep that in, uh keep that in mind. Um, the other, if you pull out sort of that, the the Berkeley's uh increase this year. If you were to take out that out of district, the the increase to the assessment is a much more modest number, I think it's. Or sixty-six thousand or something like that, it's a, the percentage is far lower. So it's, it, I mean, it's a real cost, but it's it's coming from essentially one budget, Berkeley K to eight, sort of sliding over. Um, it follows the student and that was part of, and that was the rationale behind the agreement, so. Um, I just wanna be clear about that, the other thing I wanna reiterate is, as Mister Taro said, um the minimum um. Local contribution is not something that we have any control over, and it is determined by the state and. There are a variety of factors, but one of them is like sort of that community wealth factor, um that's not something we can control, and it is not necessarily equal. Between the two communities, it has to do with income, it has to do with uh residential uh housing value. Um and so if if that looks sort of, you know, not equitable to folks, um. I just wanna be clear that that's not, that's not a number that we have any control over. Um, and sometimes those are the two things that sort of most jump out at people when they look, when they look at this um assessment sheet, so. Um, I hope I clarified and didn't make that more confusing, um and please correct me um. If I said anything incorrect, you know. No, I I I think you explain that very well, and I I'm, it's good to see that the formula is doing what it was intended to do. And if you go back to, I think it was.
Was intended to do. And if you go back to, I think it was FY twenty-two, which was two years ago. Mr. Taro, when we adopted it, that was when we really noticed the disparity. It in the out of, that the out of district placements could put on any one budget. Um, and and the shift happened, it was, that was the first year we did it, so there was a a bit of a shift there and that shifted. Um, that's the year that Somerset's assessment went up about nineteen percent because we were trying to level that. And Berkeley's assessment went down about five percent. So now I think we are on even playing fields and and we're just moving. The out of district costs along with the students, so that they're following the town that they come from. I I and I'm sorry that I I don't know this off the top of my head, but one of the things that just jumped out on me is on step five. Chapter seventy. I I don't know why, Ron, and I might be wrong, um. I don't know why I thought that that wasn't done per pupil, but that was done as a percentage of the. Minimum local contribution, but am I wrong? I might be wrong. I don't know why that that what that was, I was thinking that.
No, it's 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 based on a percentage allocation based on student population as a percentage.
Okay, okay.
That's uh, that's going to just.
Yeah, and I think.
Yeah, it it that hasn't changed. It's 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 based on a percentage of student enrollment by member community.
Okay, and then as you said, um, Madam Chair, that what really drives this is the. Minimum local contribution that is determined by D E S T based on wealth factors and so. That that's meant to help um each community pay their fair share based on the wealth factors that the state determines. So. Yeah, I I I think we may need to vote on this either here at this meeting or the next one, just to adopt the alternative assessment again. I think this is pretty clear.
And Madam Chair, if I could just add, um, also just the minimum local. Um, that is set obviously by D E S T, you know, if you really look at the percentage of the uh seven point one million dollars, it's really close. I think Somerset's about seventy-two percent and Berkeley is uh twenty-eight percent. It's really close. It's not. Off by much. Um, I would say I didn't do the math, but I'm just doing it real quick. So. Uh, so I think the state is uh doing its job, even though we have no control over it. But it's starting to level itself off like uh it's, they said it would after ten to twelve years or so, so. Uh, but um. But thanks for uh breaking this down for the public who may be watching this and then obviously we'll. Probably do a recap at the next meeting as well.
We definitely, we definitely will. Um, any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, um. Before we move to vote, Mr. Schoonover, Mr. Taro, anything that we overlooked that you feel like you need to add?
The only thing I was gonna add was lacrosse, but you addressed that.
And Ms. Gagliardi, I think um you mentioned voting on the, I think that. When we adopted the regional agreement, we adopted that, it's funny, we should probably stop calling it the alternate formula. I think it's the formula, right? When we, when we adopted the agreement, we adopted that, uh, we voted that formula.
Yeah, but I think that it each year we have to uh uh, we have to vote specifically to. Um, continue to use that alternative formula that's.
Okay.
In the agreement.
Okay.
I mean, there there are, at at one point, there was some debate whether just adopting the assessments at town meeting would formally do that, but I think. It it would be that a good to take that extra step to have a formal approval of using this formula once again.
That's, that's how I, yeah, that's how I took it as well, uh, because if we didn't adopt the the alternative assessment. Um. Technically, I think it it reverts back to the actual assessment, the state assessment. So I think we have to vote on it and it like. Like Julie said, it doesn't hurt, better safe than sorry.
Okay. So I'm thinking through the order of this, so we're gonna need, I I feel like we are going to need three votes. Let's logically think about the order we need. I I think it's important that we do a separate vote on the user fees. I think then we also obviously need a vote on the uh to accept the preliminary budget and then. Uh, the formula. So I'm thinking in that order.
Yeah.
Fees budget assessment.
Okay.
All right, if there are no other questions at this time, I would um entertain a motion to approve a flat fee. Of one hundred and fifty dollars for athletics and a flat fee of one hundred and fifty dollars for performing arts. With a four hundred and fifty dollar total family cap with fees going into the respective revolving accounts. For the twenty-three, twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. So moved.
Okay, I could.
I have a motion by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi, uh, seconded by Mr. Machado. I'll do a roll call vote of members. Uh, Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera.
Aye.
Ms. Gagliardi.
Aye.
Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien.
Aye.
And Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, next I would um entertain a motion to approve, to, I'm sorry, to accept the budget subcommittee recommendation. Of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four gross operating budget. In the amount of twenty million eight hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. And then net operating budget of eighteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars. For the purposes of presentation at the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
I'm a motion by Mr. Machado and a second by Ms. O'Brien. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera.
Aye.
Ms. Ramos Gagliardi.
Aye.
Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Lastly, I would entertain a motion to adopt the alternate assessment formula as outlined in the current regional agreement. Uh, for the uh allocation of each member community's contribution. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Machado. On roll call, Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera.
Aye.
Ms. Ramos Gagliardi.
Aye.
Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is public input. Do we have anyone who would like to participate in public input and? Raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone. Mr. Schoonover, you're those, you're not seeing anyone either.
No, I'm not.
Okay. In that case, then I would entertain a motion, let me make sure I'm not forgetting anything. But I just need a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi. I'm roll call, Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera.
Aye.
Ms. Ramos Gagliardi.
Aye.
Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you.